Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Blacksburg Planning Commissioner, always held on the first Tuesday of each month in the Roger Hedgepath Chambers at the Blacksburg Municipal Building at 300 South Main Street. Citizens may address the Planning Commission during specified times on the agenda and are requested to hear to the following: Please speak at the podium, state your name and address, direct comments only to the Planning Commission, and please limit speaking time to a maximum of three minutes. Speak only once during a specific hearing or comment period. If you need a wireless microphone, it's available, just request. Please silence all cell phones, show respect for all speakers, and allow all opinions to be expressed in a tolerant atmosphere. So with that, I'll call us to order and maybe have a roll call, please.
Mr. Britt?
Here.
Mr. Irman?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Kassoff?
Ms. Cassie?
Here.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
You have a chair. A quorum, Ms. Jones.
A quorum, yay, alright, we're ready to go. We'll start with our consent agenda, approval of the minutes from last meeting, CUP 25-4, conditional use permit request for a multifamily duplex in the Old Town Residential area of our town at 205 Washington Street. We would like to schedule a public hearing. And RZN 25-7, ordinance number 2094, a rezoning request from General Commercial to Planned Residential for a mixed-use multifamily and commercial development at 702 University City Boulevard. This was meant to be a public hearing tonight, but has been canceled and is rescheduled for our November meeting. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
And Chair, I recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, then we have approval of the consent agenda and we shall move on to public hearings. We will start with CUP-25-2, conditional use permit to request, a request for an automobile dealership in General Commercial at 1711 North Main Street. And we'll begin with a staff presentation by Mr. Patterson.
Good evening. Condition use permit 25-2, automobile dealership in the General Commercial zoning district. The applicant is Grant Walker, Walker Auto Works. The property owner is Gears Bilwell LLC, property located at 1711 North Main Street. It's approximately 0.87 acres in size, and it is located in the General Commercial zoning district. An automobile dealership, as a town definition, the use of any building, land, area, or other premises for the display of new and used automobiles, trucks, vans, or motorcycles for sale or rent, including any warranted repair work and other major and minor repair service conducted as accessory use. This particular one is a pretty minor, minor actually use for automobile dealership, as we'll see in just a minute here. Existing conditions at 1711 North Main Street, the upper level of the building is used for Blacksburg Dance Theater Studio. The lower level is where they're looking to locate the automobile dealership. It's approximately 35,000 square feet of warehouse-type storage which is available for lease. This is depiction outlined here in blue of the location at 1711 North Main Street. To the south is a medical office building, to the north is a church, and it's immediately crossed from the Maple Ridge townhouses. The current zoning is general commercial. Future land use is commercial. This is showing the lot itself, which is accessed from North Main Street. Kind of a blow-up of the lot. The access from North Main Street, and then goes through the parking lot. The lower level is in access behind the building, at this spot right here. This is showing the building kind of from the North Main Street and where the existing sign is for the building. This is a side view of the building. And this shows the back of the building, the access from North Main Street, through the parking lot, down the hill a little bit, to the lower level of the building, where the automobile dealership will be located. This particular request is a little different than you typically see for automobile dealership. The vehicles are imported classic vehicles from Japan for sale basically online. Generally, between 10 to 15 vehicles at this location at a time, and all the vehicles will be located inside. There will be no vehicles located or displayed outside whatsoever, is our understanding for the application. The operation is non-traditional. The warehouse to store vehicles will be inside until sold, and the owner is the, really the only employee of the business currently, plus one potential future employee. This is basically a very low-impact type of business that you would see along Main Street. The district purpose in General Commercial, is the General Commercial District is designed for a variety of commercial uses, both pedestrian and automobile-oriented. The intent of the district is to provide for more intense commercial uses in the downtown commercial district, but in a manner which is consistent with the town's character. Modern strip commercial development is not in keeping with the small-town character of Blacksburg, and this district is intended to discourage such development. Instead of vital and lively streetscape created by commercial buildings with windows and entrances oriented to the street is an important goal of this district. While residential uses are allowed in the district under some circumstances, such uses shall complement the commercial uses that serve as the primary intent in this district. This particular property has previously had a site development plan and has been at this location for some time. There's never been no changes to the exterior of the building or to the property itself. The criteria for evaluation of condition use permit, as you're familiar with, is conformance of conference of plan, specific elements of the plan into official town policies adopted in relation thereto, including the purposes of the zoning ordinance. The adherence to minimum adverse impact to surrounding neighborhood and community that proposed as submitted shall not cause adverse impacts, as defined by Section 1181B of the zoning ordinance. Adverse impacts considered, they include, but not be limited to, traffic congestion, noise, lights, dust, drainage, water quality, air quality, odor, fumes, and vibrations. Due regard is given to the timing of the operation, site design, access, screening, or other matters which might be regulated to mitigate adverse impacts. There is a use and design standard for automobile dealership, however, in this particular case, it's the, the standards are always dealing with exterior display and storage of the vehicles. In this case, none is being required because it will all be interior to the, to the building itself. And it goes on, the same thing with C and D, it deals with display of the vehicles exterior to the, to the, to the property on the outside. The only possible adverse impacts that we saw is possible exhaust fumes from vehicles inside the building. The overhead garage doors will be upright and open when a vehicle is being moved or in operation within the facility itself. Delivery pickup of vehicles in transport, a lot of times you see big transport trucks carrying a whole lot of vehicles. In this particular case, transport trucks will load/unload at a secondary location, and individual vehicles will be driven to and from that location to, to this, to the site itself, at 1711 North Main. There is no adverse impacts identified for public utilities, stormwater, or waste management and recycling services. There are three staff recommending conditions. The first one is the standard conditions, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the application date of July 31, 2025. Second is no vehicles for sale will be on display or parked outside of the building. And the last recommended condition is a signed permit will be submitted for staff review and approval prior to the placement of any new signage on the property. And with that, this is another depiction from the backside of the, of the building on the lot. Any questions we have? And the applicant is also here.
Any questions for staff? I had a question from work session that I think you guys were going to do a little research on, and that's the question of whether or not this building meets all the code standards for storing vehicles inside.
For, for what they're proposing to doing, according to the building official, it will be, be available to adhere to what the requirements are.
Any other questions? Okay, does the applicant have a presentation? No presentation from the applicant. Is there any public comment? No public comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to recommend approval of CUP 25-2 to the Town Council with the three conditions recommended by the staff.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There's a, there's a study from about 10 years ago where they looked at Gazogen houses in Europe. They found that those with attached garages had meaningfully higher disease rates of the occupants than those with unattached garages. Given that there's children kind of above, they don't know for sure why, because it's epidemiological and not double-blind, because how would you do a double-blind study that way? But it strikes me that it would be better for the children above if you didn't keep, they think it's solvents, paint thinners, paints, cleaning materials, and that kind of thing. Is that something you'd be willing to do, to kind of not keep those things, given that there are kids, kids above dancing?
You mentioned not keep those things?
In the garage, in the, in the, in your space.
I do intend to keep cleaners stored within the space, but because of the lack of a real drainage system inside of the space, all vehicles will be cleaned outside in the open. So when those chemicals are used, the cleaners, they won't be creating fumes in the building and potentially causing problems.
Thank you.
I should ask if there are additional questions for the applicant? I didn't even skip past that. Other discussion? I have one more question to raise. If, if the current occupant were to experience fume smells or other sort of adverse impacts after this building is operating in this way, what would be the course of action for them?
Well, one thing is if it's brought to our attention, say the dance studios could bring it to our attention, then we would follow up with, with what it is, whether there's any adverse impacts at all. There's a number of ways you can, you can do that and adhere to that. One would be to, to do like a carbon monoxide alarm or other alarms-type systems that would pick up whatever it is, if that's what your question is, if that answers that. If there is a more adverse impacts, then we can always bring them back before the Planning Commission and the Town Council.
I see. I think it is important, you know, given somewhat questionable compatibility of the uses, to, to ensure that there is, you know, a way to resolve any future impact if we discover that. That, that would be my opinion. But given that it, for, for me, given that it meets code and, I think, was the building designed to have some sort of vehicular operation in there originally?
Not to my knowledge, no. The property owner is here, but I don't believe it was built specifically for that type of use.
I mean, it has like a garage opening.
Well, originally that, that particular space had some features, that part of the building was originally designed to be a warehouse or a velo lighter.
Ah, yeah.
It's no longer there.
Right.
It does not have a carbon monoxide detector in the downstairs, and I frankly think that might be a good thing to add to the safety for that part of the building, even though the lower head door will be open any time there's a car driven in or out.
Right. Paul, it surprises me that that wouldn't be a requirement under code if you have, like, vehicles operating in the building, that you wouldn't have any sort of...
It would always be a good idea if it isn't, yes.
But it's not part of the building code?
Not to my knowledge. Jimmy, you might, you might know a little more?
Could we stipulate that as a condition? Let's stipulate that as a condition.
Okay, so, well then I think we have to like...
Friendly amendment, maybe?
Back, backtrack a little bit in terms of the motion. Do we need to have a vote on the motion on the floor, though, I think? And then do a new motion, or can we just kind of rescind?
I am not, I do not know.
The, the person making the motion could always add, add a fourth condition to, to what it is, and then bring it back to you here.
Okay.
I wish to add that condition.
Okay. Of a carbon monoxide.
Wonder.
Monitor and alarm system, or what do you call it, emergency alert, fire alert things? Yeah.
Well, should we discuss that? I, I don't know. That's comfortable for me. And maybe upstairs and downstairs, right? CO detector.
Yeah.
They're like $25.
What, second?
Okay. I, I maybe do have some further discussion, but I am cautiously supporting this based on what I feel like we have the right to do as a planning commission, but I do want to voice that I am somewhat concerned for the health and well-being of dancers in this building, and would love to feel more sure that there would not be adverse impacts, though we don't have any that are specifically identified in this situation.
I might have a question for the building owner. Is the air handling for downstairs and upstairs separate, or is it part of the same system?
No, it's not the same system. They're, they're totally separate. Plus, I could add that there's a four-inch concrete deck that separates the lower floor from the upper floor, so there's essentially no way that anything could penetrate, fume or anything else from one floor to the next.
Thank you.
There is studio space beside the...
Yes, that's true.
And would those have the same air handling HVAC system?
Well, actually, in the warehouse itself, there is no air handling system. There's just two unit heaters.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, then we shall move to a vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Alright, we are moving on to our next item. CUP 25-3, conditional use permit to, a request for a dance hall use in the DC Downtown Commercial at 130 Jackson Street Northwest. And again, we'll begin with a staff presentation from Mr. Patterson.
Condition use permit 25-3 is for a dance hall in the Downtown Commercial zoning district. The applicant's Oleka Restaurant/Bar, Alina Vies, Carlos Sebastian, and on Manuel Hote. Property owners, Downtown Development LLC. The property is located in the middle of the downtown block at 130 Jackson Street Northwest. The acreage of the property, the parcel itself, is 0.6 acres. The building, the interior of the building on the first floor is 3,411 square feet of interior space, and it is zoned Downtown Commercial. Dance hall definition for the town of Blacksburg definitions is establishments in which more than 10% of the total floor areas is designed or used as a dance floor, or where admission-free fee is directly collected, or some other form of compensation is obtained for dancing. And I believe this is the first dance hall that's come before the town in quite a while, at least 10, 10-plus years. Existing conditions at 130 Jackson Street Northwest, it is vacant. The prior use was the Blue Ridge Axe Throwing Arcade, which did receive a condition use permit for this location. Building permit for interior construction to a restaurant-bar use has been submitted, along with a demolition permit and a sprinkler permit. This is the location of the property itself. This is North Main Street, College Avenue, and Jackson Street. The current zoning is Downtown Commercial. Future land use is also Downtown Commercial. This is the building here with the, the green pen in it. The access from North Main Street is to pedestrian alley between DP Doe and the Hokey Hair Building. And the other access is from Jackson Street, right across from Benny's Pizzeria Place. This parking lot itself is rented out and leased-out parking spaces. It's not really for the general public to park. This is another depiction, area view of the building, location here, parking lot, access to parking lot, in the pedestrian alley off of North Main Street. This is a view from Jackson Street through the parking. This is the existing building. There's no real changes to the exterior of the building, except for the signage and some mechanical equipment which will be screened. This is a circulation through the parking lot, one-way circulation around, and the building location at this location here. This is the front view of the building. There's a ramp that leads up to the front door. There's also another front door on the other side of the entryway here. And there's a landing dock over here with another exit that will lead to, to the standing, landing dock and stairs leading down. And this is a side view of the building on the right side, the landing dock, exit door, the ramp that goes up into the building. There's two different configurations that they're proposing. The first is for the restaurant portion of the building here, which will have a total occupancy, occupancy of 188 allowed within the building. Here's the ramp that leads up into the building, the other door, front entrance, the women's and men's restroom, corridor leading to the loading dock. This is the bar area and the kitchen, bar sitting, and bar sitting, and tables and tables for the restaurant-type use. After 10 o'clock, they are proposing then to turn the restaurant bar to be able to use for dining and dancing. The tables are then removed, and then they put, the tables are stored in, in shared storage here. The occupancy then for the, the dining and dancing area and the whole building then at that point becomes 292 persons maximum. This request is for the dancing hall in the Downtown Commercial. As I said, the maximum occupancy for the dining room configuration is 188. The dance hall configuration after 10:00 PM is 292 maximum occupancy. The restaurant does op, will operate prior to 10:00 PM, and the dance hall configuration then after 10:00 PM. And they are allowed then to, to open and be open till 2:00 in the morning for the ABC. The Downtown Commercial district purposes, this is included in your staff report, because it's a long meeting tonight, I won't read it to you, but you can find this online also on the public hearing portion of our town website. Conference plan for future land use Downtown Commercial, small-scale commercial uses with high pedestrian volumes and limited parking needs, frequently utilizing shared parking areas, vertically mixed uses with upper-story residential office uses. Uses that are smaller in scale with more limited impacts around noise, parking, traffic, and lighting are appropriate. Examples include restaurants, retail, small markets, and groceries, personal service establishments, and fine art studio. The criteria for evaluation of a condition use permit, as previously stated, the things we mainly look at are traffic congestion, noise, lights, dust, drainage, water quality, air quality, odor, fumes, and vibrations. And due regard is given to the timing of the operation, site design, access, screening, or other matters which might be regulated to mitigate adverse impacts. And as I said, they do have a building permit for the reconstruction of the interior of the building, along with the smoke, smoke sprinkler system permit and demolition permit that they have currently. The owners and managers are also the owners and managers of the Berg Restaurant, which has been in place for about two years here, and off of Draper Street, which is right underneath the parking, parking garage, or parking, street parking, in that parking facility. The use and design standards, there's only one use and design standards that we have for dance hall, which is similar to most of what we require for commercial businesses. Parking shall be located behind the front line of the principal building, meaning a prior conditioning permit was here. The Town Council has already acted on this for the, the Blue Axe Throwing that was previously in the building. Public dances and dance hall permit also have a separate section of the town code for public dances and dance halls, requiring a dance hall obtained and maintained and approved public dances and dance hall permit prior to operating the dance hall. And a copy of Chapter 4, Amusements, Article 4, public dances and dance halls can be found in attachment to the staff report, and a condition use permit should be included for the applicant to meet this requirement. Basically requires them to give some additional information to the police department. The police department does the investigation and then makes a recommendation to the Town Council on granting of that permit. Potential adverse impacts is dependent upon the operation of the dance hall. Like I just mentioned, the operation and management of this facility will be similar to the people that are currently using the Berg Restaurant and have been using the Berg Restaurants, so they are familiar with operating a restaurant at night here in downtown Blacksburg. Management occupancy levels will need to be maintained, the exit doors remain operational, and the use of pyrotechnics effects or fireworks are a potential concern. We've talked to the applicants about this, and they, they are agreeable to the conditions that there will be no pyrotechnic effects or fireworks. The noise level, they are familiar with what the noise levels are, the police department does maintain those. And the safety and use of outside areas of property at night. Staff recommending conditions is the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the application date of July 31, 2025. The applicant shall obtain and maintain an approved public dance and dance hall permit prior to the operation of a dance hall as required by town code, Chapter 4, Amusements, Article 4, public dances and dance hall. There shall be, shall be no pyrotechnic effects or fireworks allowed within the building. Additional safety, exterior lighting, and security cameras will be installed by the applicant. In going and looking at, at the parking lot area at night, I was pleasantly surprised with how much lighting is currently available there in the, in the area, especially around the surrounding buildings. There are some shadowy areas that some additional exterior safety lighting, and it was always a good idea to have security cameras for, for liability and what happened, in case something does happen. And a signed permit shall be submitted for review and approval prior to any signage placed prior, placed exterior to the building. And with that, that kind of concludes the staff presentation. Any questions you may have? And the applicants are here.
Any questions for staff? Does the applicant have a presentation?
I would say yes.
Yeah? Okay, we're ready for applicant presentation.
My partner, Huakin, over here, and we are representatives of Oleka, the owner of Oleka Sebastian is back there. We have a short presentation of what the main idea for Oleka is, and kind of, we're here to answer questions if you guys have any safety concerns, you know, anything like that. But before that, the story of Oleka, real quick, is we're all friends. I'm a Hokey graduate, he's about a graduate as well, and we all became friends because of the Berg Restaurant. And we're traveling around Europe, so we are basically trying to bring something new, a new concept to Blacksburg, being that as an interior design, as well as also more modern drinks, alcoholic beverages, and, as well as food. And we would like to also as well host a lot of different social and cultural events that we already do at the, at the Berg Restaurant, and he will talk a little bit more about it in a second. And this is some things we kind of already have in storage that got delivered to, to us to kind of give an idea of what the interior design is going to look like, and Huakin here is going to talk a little bit more about the events.
Yeah, 100%. So basically, we already have experience running a venue compared to Oleka's with the Berg. The difference, events that we're planning to, you know, participate in is comedy stand-up, karaoke nights, book club meetings, dance lessons, football sports, watch parties, Virginia Tech Club meetings, fundraisers, live events, performances, and any other philanthropy organization that wants to, you know, host an event here at the Berg, we'll definitely, I mean, at Oleka's, we'll definitely keen to do that. When it comes to the food menu, it's more Americanized. We do burgers, wings, pizzas, appetizers, salads, all that good stuff. This is a dining space, I believe he already spoke a little bit more about it. That dotted line, squared dotted line is basically a 10% that we're... That dotted line, squared dotted line is basically a ten percent that we're allowed to use right now. And we're requesting, you know, having a little bit more space just so we can fit in more people and, you know, do better events and bigger events and have people more comfortable. This is a drinks and cocktails menu, so refined classics, wolf spirits, signature cocktails, spirits collections. So it's definitely targeted to a different audience, but we also will target to the Hokies community. I know here in Blacksburg, we have a lot of sports bars. We're trying to do a little twist and something different. The event and dance space, this is what it will look like without the black dotted line and the space we requesting to have in order for us to run the events that we're, you know, wishing to run. Any further questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, do we have any public comment? Boy, everybody's quiet tonight. All right, then I will be looking for motion. Do you have a motion?
I move to recommend approval for CUP twenty-five-three, conditional use permit request for the dance hall use in downtown commercial, one thirty Jackson Street.
And with the staff recommended conditions?
Excuse me, yes, with the staff recommended conditions, one through five.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are we ready, any discussion? Friends? Okay. Well, then we move to vote, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None? We'll move on to the next thing. All right, moving on to rezoning twenty-five-eight, ordinance number two thousand and ninety-five, rezoning to, rezoning request from RM forty-eight, medium-density residential, to PR planned residential for the development of a seven store, of seven four-bedroom townhome units at seventeen oh nine and seventeen eleven Whipple Drive. And we will begin with a staff presentation from Mr. Warren.
Thank you all, good evening. So as was mentioned, this is at seventeen oh nine, seventeen eleven Whipple Drive. It's two-point-seven acres. The owner is seventeen oh nine Whipple LLC and then Greystone seventeen eleven Whipple Partnership LLC. So their current uses today are multifamily residential and then there is a single-family residential house at seventeen, at seventeen eleven Whipple Drive. I'm sorry, seventeen oh nine. And then the current zoning is RM forty-eight, which is medium-density multi-unit residential. The future land use designation is high-density residential. This is the property highlighted in blue. It is, to orient you, Givens Lane is to the north here. You have Whipple. And then it's next door to Eccles Village. And then a little further down, you can see on the tail end almost the intersection of North Main Street and Whipple Drive. So this request has a number of items. At seventeen oh nine Whipple Drive, as was mentioned, there is a single-family dwelling that is proposed to be demolished. And then seventeen eleven Whipple Drive, today, there are currently two multifamily buildings consisting of ninety-six bedrooms. There is no proposed changes to those two buildings. The proposed new development is, or seven four-bedroom townhome units. So it would be one hundred and twenty-four bedrooms overall, which would equal forty-five bedrooms per acre. There will be some parking spaces added, which would make the total hundred spaces altogether. They also are proposing an eight-foot multi-use trail, which is approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet, that would extend from Whipple Drive back to the Eccles Village property. This is their concept plan. Here you can see the seven units, the highlighted trail to the bottom, the existing two buildings to the top of the screen. And then they also are proposing a walkway, new parking in front of the townhome units as well as a connection to Whipple Drive. And today, there is a driveway here for the single-family house. This would be proposed to be sidewalk, matching the sidewalk on both sides. So as far as a little history of this property, in two thousand and fourteen, for the existing apartment building property, there was a comp plan amendment to change that to high-density residential, which was approved. In two thousand and fifteen, that same property was rezoned from R five to RM forty-eight. In two thousand and twenty, seventeen oh nine Whipple Drive had a rezoning from R five to RM forty-eight. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, the, as part of a comp plan amendment, that was initiated by the town as part of an overall look at the comprehensive plan. This property, seventeen oh nine, was switched to high-density residential. So this entire area now is, the future land use designation is high-density residential in both properties. The entire acreage is RM forty-eight. As with any PRD, planned residential development, the commission is asked to look at the criteria as noted here on the screen. As mentioned, the future land use designation is high-density residential, as is shown on this map. And the definition of high-density residential is more than ten dwelling units per acre or more than twenty bedrooms per acre. And so there are certain implementing districts that are found with each land use designation, future land use designation. And the medium-density multi-unit residential is one that is implementing district for high-density residential as well as for planned residential. I will not read this, but this is the purpose statement for planned residential. And it is noted with any planned residential district that it's a burden the applicant to prove that they're meeting the intent of the district requested, which could be for housing for an underserved population, developments that include substantial sustainable building practices and/or certifications, provision of additional bicycle pedestrian improvements to mitigate impact, or restraints of conventional development, which the applicant has put forth that to develop under RM forty-eight now, they would be increasing the amount of impervious area and creating more parking than they believe would be necessary. So they are proposing, you know, they are proposing less parking. And, but at the same point, they are a less dense development than what they could build if they were to remain by right. This is the current zoning, showing the RM forty-eight district along Whipple Drive. So looking at the zoning ordinance, there are a number of items that staff looks at when it writes the staff report, the district standards, use and design standards, and development standards. District standards could be height, setbacks, occupancy. Use and design standards are more along the lines of the building orientation, the lighting, the buffering to other uses. And then development standards would be items such as parking, lighting, landscaping. So the use and design standards for townhomes are met. The standards do talk to the shape, the appearance layout, the overall compatibility of the townhouse uses with the surrounding area. A couple examples are, it does require that at least one entrance of a townhome face the street, and the principal windows of those townhomes face the street. They are showing a unit facing Whipple Drive, which does meet the standard. And then also, between each unit, there is required to be a minimum of three feet and a maximum of eight feet, so that each unit is stepped back a little from each other to create more depth and more visual interest. And so they are meeting this requirement. As far as development standards, one I would note is that the RM forty-eight district that they would be rezoning from does require a minimum of ten percent tree canopy coverage. They believe that they do have that canopy coverage now as the site exists. And there has been no standard provided for the planned residential district. And it is still recommended by staff that they meet the ten percent minimum canopy coverage and that be added to the proposed PR district. And the applicant may be able to address that as well. As far as impact on infrastructure, because of being seven units, they already have a stormwater management concept plan that has been approved by our engineering staff. The water services are adequate for the site as well as sanitary sewer. And due to the limited number of trips for the seven units that would be added to the existing multifamily development, minimal impact is anticipated in this area, as most trips would be going from Whipple to North Main Street. And typically south, although there could be some trips going north as well. And then there is transit service available on Whipple Drive. So the corridor committee did review this application. They did recommend that if the trail could be widened to ten feet, they felt that the trail could be a bit more usable and more consistent with our other trail widths. They did recommend that while outdoor, bicycle parking is provided per unit, that there be a separate outdoor bicycle parking area for residents and guests of residence to use, as well as they did strongly support the applicant working with the adjacent property owners of Eccles Village to try to provide that small connection that exists from where their trail would end at their property line to where the Eccles Village trail currently runs. As far as a proffer statement, there are two proffers. One is that is pretty typical, that the property be developed in substantial conformance with the plan and with the application that had been submitted. And then also that the occupancy, maximum occupancy be a maximum of a family plus two unrelated persons or no more than four unrelated persons. And I did want to add also that the, they have, that we have made contact with the property management group and also the homeowners association. And that it is a matter of, the applicant and the homeowners association contacts hooking up now to start that conversation about the trail connection. But that has not gotten, you know, to the point where there is an agreement made, but there is progress being made on that front. And then finally, just, they are asking for a modification request, that basically there is a four-foot vegetative strip between the curb and sidewalk that is required. And because the sidewalk would be next to the street and be basically in line with the existing sidewalks, since that does not have a four-foot planting strip, that infill sidewalk, which is where the current single-family house driveway is, they're asking for a modification for that. And that concludes my remarks, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Applicant have a presentation? From Mr. Neal.
Good evening, members of planning commission, appreciate your time tonight and Andrew's presentation. My name is John Neal with Foresight Design. Won't be able to be as brief as the previous two, but I'm going to try my best. We're here for the public hearing tonight, representing Greystone Companies, Kirk Johnson, Siobhan Dowski, they're here tonight as well to answer any questions you might have. As I said, I'm John Neal with Foresight Design. We're handling the engineering and surveying for this project. As Andrew said, two-point-seven-seven acres incorporating the two apartment, two existing apartment buildings. And that existing zoning, as Andrew said, is entirety of the single-family house and the existing apartments of RM forty-eight. And the reason we're kind of proposing a PRD, and I'll go into this a little bit, is reducing the impervious surfaces that we would have to do as developing a by right RM forty-eight development and lowering the impact of that development on our surrounding properties and the impacts that our neighbors would see when we went to develop at the RM forty-eight scale. So this is the existing site, and Eccles Village is down along the bottom of the page there. And you can see kind of all the tree line that we have in our area and then also along the left-hand side, which is also Eccles Village. And that's the existing site and the two existing apartment buildings. And then the single-family house that is to the right there on Whipple. And so this is an example, we took a by right development, we started looking at that, and that's when we kind of realized that the impacts that that would require were really unnecessary. And so this is an example of what that by right would look like with the townhouses facing Whipple, which could be desirable, but not really. We didn't think at the expense of all the impacts that that would create. Would end up adding all this additional parking lot here, and I think we went over this at the work session. You can see it's got a lot of tree coverage there, that existing parking that's kind of going in the T shape down the page. That's to the left of this parking, that's the darker gray, and it's in the white there, and you can see that. So this would add a whole additional parking lot in the by right scheme that was really not necessary. And so this is our proposed PRD, and as you can see, we've rotated the townhouses, made them more of a part of the existing community of the two apartment buildings and that parking area. And we have parking spaces directly in front of the units. One of the things we said, these will be fee simple townhomes, so they will have property lines and properties. And one of the things that we are adding to the proffer statement is that we will create the HOA prior to the sale of any unit, any fee simple property. Existing, we kind of went through this with the existing apartment buildings, ninety-six bedrooms, twenty-four four-bedroom, two-bath units, seven proposed townhomes. The current density, or I'm sorry, the proposed density after the development would be forty-five bedrooms per acre, so even less than the by right density. And the current parking use ratio, so in other words, our owners, they went and did a study all throughout the spring of what the utilization rate of the parking was for the existing apartment buildings. And that ended up being at about point five-eight spaces per bedroom. And as Andrew mentioned, we do have substantial bus service in the area, lots of bus stops pretty close by. We actually had, at our neighborhood meeting, Anna Goode Evans, one of our tenants came and they said that they ride the bus pretty routinely, regularly. And they were actually hoping for a little bit more bus service because the bus gets utilized quite a bit in these areas and in these neighborhoods. So our proposed parking ratio with this PRD would be point eight spaces per bedroom. And the most, you know, one of the most important things is the proposed open space is going to be greater than one acre on a two-point-seven-seven acre site. And we think that's important to remember. So this is it. As you can see, that trail that we have there, we did respectfully decline the ten-foot, we're staying at eight-foot. Every two foot of trail is two foot less of grass. This trail right now is going to dead-end at the end of our site until we can potentially work something out with the Eccles Village HOA. work something out with the Eccles Village HOA. Previously and up to this point, that's been attempted. They've kind of rejected those efforts, so maybe that will happen. We'd like for that to happen, but we'll see. So the benefits to the proposed townhouse layout were reducing the impervious surfaces, in other words, the impervious surfaces that we were going to have, by more than 20%, increasing the townhouse building distance to Eccles from 15 feet to 100 feet. And so I didn't touch on that when we were looking here, but I will real quick. So you can see kind of where that we, the by right development had pushed that trail all the way up against Eccles Village property line, as well as the townhouses were down close to the Eccles Village property line, as well as the proposed parking was down close to the Eccles Village property line. This newer development puts a whole lot of buffer space, and we have reserved the right. I know we show that trail as kind of a straight line. We have reserved the right. We want to make sure that we try to match the topography that we have as best as possible, getting from the sidewalk on Whipple to the end of our property. And then you can also see where that Eccles Village trail is. It's hard to see, but we're not that far from it, so if we do get that opportunity, we will connect that. And then we're preserving 90% to 95% of that tree line that was probably going to end up being pretty negatively impacted along Eccles Village. So those are the rear of those houses, so we're going to end up preserving quite a bit of their privacy. And our design, we think, like I said, I'd mentioned, we create a greater sense of community with our apartment buildings that are already there. Increase the open space from 20% to 42%, and then the green space, which is on the townhouse lots, that we don't get to count as open space, that increases from 42% to 58%. And here's a little architectural rendering from the architect of what the townhomes will look like. We have that one unit that has the front door facing Whipple Drive to meet the zoning requirements. One thing I just want to point out, we'll get the application, we'll be consistent with the proffer statement regarding the maximum dwelling unit occupancy. There were some language stuff, but it does the same thing, will meet the same intent and have those same limitations. And right now, the existing site, we have more than 10% canopy coverage with our existing vegetation, including even the part that we will have to remove for some of the grading for the townhouses. We are still going to be over that 10% canopy coverage. We're happy to put that in the application. I mean, we're not going to be taking those out. Happy to do that. And then, as I've mentioned, you know, we'll proffer that the HOA will be put in place before any unit is sold from the existing owner. And as we said, Greystone is in contact with Eccles. We're continuing to try to work that out. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for the applicant? I have one question. How, why is the trail in Eccles Village?
Why is the trail in Eccles Village? I can't honestly tell you the answer. I know it connects the two, let's see if we can go back to, the thing with it is it's relatively short in that it connects the two cul-de-sacs, one coming from Whipple and one coming from Givens. Honestly, I hate to say it, I don't know what the...
I'm just thinking it would be a shame if that was 10-foot trail to make an 8-foot trail to connect up with it. I should have asked that in work session, but it didn't come to me then.
We still think it is valuable to stay at 8 feet for just the amount of impacts that we're going to have, especially if we're never allowed to connect to that. We like to think that practical minds will prevail at some point, but if they don't, then we have a trail that dies at the end of the property, and so that'll be the dog-walking path. Till that point, and it probably still will be the dog-walking path, but maybe then you keep going.
Andrew, isn't there, haven't there been situations in which we didn't require a trail to be constructed until the time at which it was like able to connect to something?
That is difficult to word as far as, you know, if there would be the mechanism of maintaining the resources, I guess it would be financial resources that would be put aside in order to pay for something in the future that has not been used too much that I'm aware of.
Along those lines, maybe something that accommodate the future, John, would, you know, the 8-foot wide, I understand, it makes a lot of sense that if you can't make a connection, you've got, you'll have a 10-foot wide trail that doesn't connect anything. Would it be possible to grade the trail width itself to 10 feet and then pave 8 feet of it in the center, and then that way, if in the future there was a connection made, perhaps then it could be widened at that time?
Our goal was, with the 8-foot, we were going to use every bit of non-pavement to minimize the impact on that tree line and things like that. I mean, we certainly can, you know, absolutely.
Perhaps you could, perhaps you could grade the 2 feet in, towards the townhouses.
We'll see what we can do to accommodate that. I don't think that should be a problem.
Just to provide accommodation for the future, perhaps. If you could look at that during the engineering design.
Other questions for applicant?
I'll just comment that I'm really hopeful that you all are successful in making that connection. It is, I mean, in the same way that road connectivity for sort of neighborhood connectedness, it would, it makes, it's kind of wild to see how close it is, like you say, so.
The pedestrians will absolutely make that connection, whether it's on pavement or not, it's a different story.
You're not putting a fence between the two?
There's a, there's a pretty rough-looking fence that exists right now.
Is it on your property or is it on theirs?
Both. I mean, it's kind of...
If it's technically yours, it would be great to have that nut be there.
We certainly remove that. If it's on our side, we'll absolutely remove it.
Other?
Because we've got some grading in that area down there, close to it right there, for the stormwater management stuff.
That'd be good.
Are you anticipating most of these to be owner-occupied?
I have no idea at this point. They are being set up to be sold, but I can't, I can't predict what that would look like in the future.
Are there still guidelines for identifying an area as townhomes versus condominiums? Because I know when I bought my townhome, certain percentage had to be owner-occupied for them not to be listed as condos.
Well, so...
It was a long time ago, though.
Yeah, the condo designation is actually related to the ownership structure, and so since they're creating parcels for each individual townhome, because the owner would potentially own the townhome and the land underneath, it would be, so what they say is fee simple and, you know, not as a condo. When you own something as a condo, the association actually owns the land underneath it, the condo association. So it's just a designation in the way it's owned. And when you do have a condo, the financing is impacted by the percentage of people who rent. And so very often, in a condo scenario, you will have limitations in order to keep the financing favorable to like a first-time homebuyer. But in this case, it would be a townhome, the way that they're subdividing it. Does that make sense?
John, when you, when you extend, when you build these, you're obviously going to have to take some of those trees that are east of the T part of the parking lot.
Yes, yes.
You have to take all of them?
I don't know the answer to that yet.
Because in your, in your plan, it looked like it was just a, just a grass lawn for the, is it possible that, in the interest of the tree canopy?
Yeah, so we're not doing that.
No, I understand, but you could put anything, John, I mean, you could put anything on there and say, "We're not doing that," right? I mean, you could put the worst thing imaginable. That's, that's, that's a bit of disingenuous.
Well, 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 I'll, I'll challenge...
Even if you could, I believe that you could do that, and I believe that you weren't even thinking of doing that.
I'll challenge you on that, in that that site plan went through the review with the town and was ready to be signed and approved.
All right, noted. Fair enough.
But, yeah, absolutely, we're going to have to get rid of some of those, like on the...
Sure, but do you have to get rid of, does the, does the left-hand unit have to have a backyard the exact same way that the right-hand unit does, with no trees?
So that'll be the property line for uniformity and everything like that.
I see.
But absolutely, we will not remove any tree that we don't have to, to get the building in, by all means.
The solution of the relationship to the apartment buildings is really significant, I think. The sort of shift of it and facing, facing those communities and being part of, part of that community is, is a really nice feature.
And they have real backyards.
And real backyards.
Are there any more questions for the applicant? Otherwise, we probably should hear public comment before we start discussion. Questions, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter? Welcome.
Is that as big as it gets? I've got another of a presentation. Okay.
Here we go.
It's a little bit...
Is it okay?
Can we make it a little bit bigger? Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. I don't really need the, I'll be talking through it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Tasha Person, 105 Countryside Court. But I'm here in my role as a board member of the Countryside Estates Community Association and representing their interests today. This map gives you an idea of the location of our neighborhood. The problem area is the intersection between Countryside Court and North Main, and you can see it in the red circle there. The pictures above show what our community sees as they look left when they're trying to exit the neighborhood. It can be hard to see cars coming down South Main until it's too late, often because people are speeding coming from the bypass. The picture below shows what drivers see as they are heading towards town. So there's a blind corner on the right-hand side, and you can see the arrow there pointing to our intersection. The stopping distance before that blind corner is much smaller than advisable. We appreciate the mitigation by the traffic committee in the form of the diamond sign to the right there, letting drivers know that there's a hidden intersection, but this was recently installed, so we're not certain of the efficacy of this yet. This is the view leaving town towards the bypass. So complex factors of rapid building in that area, and a bus stop means that traffic aggregates in this area. Pedestrians, bikers, and drivers all frequent that area of North Main, making it hard to navigate safely. One of our main areas of concern is the lack of a sidewalk between Countryside Court and Givens. It looks like it's already on the pathways to the future map as a proposed future sidewalk to install. Our neighborhood, however, is landlocked currently until that happens. And that's Town Council terminology, not mine, okay? We hope that being moved to a higher priority in the pathways to the future matrix will address this concern. This is the view moving towards North Main on Countryside Court, so that's within my neighborhood. Both Primrose residents and Countryside Court residents walk towards that intersection. There's no crosswalk at the intersection, and you can see at the arrows inserted there that the car is shown cutting the corner at the intersection. This happens regularly and exacerbates the safety issue at this intersection. The upshot is that for a neighborhood that is landlocked, lacks safe egress, and alternately contends with high volumes of traffic and speeding vehicles, every new development, however small, adds to the peril for our neighbors as they try to enter and exit the neighborhood. And the reason for that is because the Town Council has already approved several high-density developments. So what we're contending with is a whole bunch of traffic on North Main, and we have no way to get out of our neighborhood safely. So if additional developments are going to be approved, then just for the background for this commission, we want basic safety considerations as soon as possible. That means a sidewalk that safely connects us, a crosswalk making it safer to walk in my own neighborhood, lower speed limits to compensate for a shortened stopping distance, and combined with a blind curb and better enforcement to stop speeders. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there applicant rebuttal? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the requested PUD, and was there conditions with that, Andrew?
The canopy, the 10% canopy.
10% canopy. Any other conditions the staff recommended?
No, as it is planned residential development, it would be.
Yes.
But it's with a recommendation that they move forward with amending the PRD to accommodate the 10% canopy coverage.
Correct.
Was there one other proposed amendment from the applicant? Am I misremembering?
There was one regarding including an HOA requirement before the sale.
Do you all like to include that?
Yes.
All right. Fabulous.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
We do appreciate the comments that were just made about considerations of safety. We probably need to look at that.
Yeah, I agree. It really isn't, certainly our place as a planning commission, actually there's limitations on what we can require an individual developer to respond to. However, your point is well-made that as we consider additional development in this area, really anywhere in the town, because you're affected by the bypass, it's like, so I, you know, take my daughter from Little Leapers to Blacksburg Dance Theater, I go right the way that you're talking about. And I know that there are other people that are using that element to circumvent town, you know, and so just as our town grows, I appreciate that your problem is getting more intense, and I think that this is the right forum to bring it up, and I encourage you to also talk about it at Town Council. Yeah, so thank you for your time. Is there any further discussion from Planning Commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All of those opposed? None? Okay, we shall keep on moving. So next, we're on to ARZN 25-9, Ordinance 2090, Tech Terrace PRD rezoning request from RM48 medium-density residential, multi-unit residential to PR planned residential for the redevelopment of an existing apartment complex into a seven-story apartment building at 305 and 309 Webb Street and 800 Orchard Street. We'll begin with a staff presentation from Ms. O'Shea.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone 305 and 309 Webb Street and 800 Orchard Street from RM48 medium-density residential to PR planned residential. Property owners are diversified interests TT LLC and Webb Street LLC, and the area to be rezoned is just over two and a half acres. There are currently multifamily and single-family residential uses on site. Here is an aerial of the property outlined in blue. The proposal is for the redevelopment of the existing Tech Terrace Apartments to a single seven-story building with up to 723 bedrooms at 274 bedrooms per acre. The building includes a mix of one-to-five-bedroom units, a 448-space parking deck, and 296 bicycle parking spaces. Here is an image of the master plan showing the proposed layout. The dashed areas indicate terrorist areas that are open to the sky. Section 1151 of the zoning ordinance outlines the four criteria for evaluating rezonings. These include conformance with the comprehensive plan, the need and the justification for the change, and the effects on the surrounding properties and surfaces. The future land use map designates 305 Webb and 800 Orchard as high-density residential and 309 Webb as commercial. The parcels fall within an urban development area and are also designated as a preferred location for high-density student housing. While the high-density designation supports student housing, the commercial designation is less aligned with the proposed intensity. The parcel is located in an area designated for high-density student housing as identified in the 2022 comprehensive plan update. Here you can see an image of the future land use map with the subject property outlined in blue designated as high-density residential and commercial. Comprehensive plan acknowledges the need for diverse and affordable housing options. It also encourages the reinvestment in aging student housing, which this application proposes. The applicant has also proffered a contribution to the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In the zoning ordinance, there is a statement of purpose for each zoning district. The PR district allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development and the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application, plan, and proffers are binding. Any substantive changes would require the applicant to amend the PRD through the public hearing process. Here you can see an image of the current zoning map with the subject property outlined in blue designated as RM 48. It's adjacent to PR at the Edge, RM 48, and other commercial designations. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The Planned Residential Development District allows an applicant to propose most of the district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. District standards apply to all the development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table and in the staff report. You can see that the proposed district standards are generally more intense than the surrounding zoning would permit. The proposed height is 93 feet, and the setbacks are 12 and a half feet in the front, five feet on the side, and 10 feet in the rear. This is more intense than what the RM 48 allows. However, the PR district does allow reduced setbacks if they're justified for the development. The proposed density is 274 bedrooms per acre or up to 723 bedrooms total. While the comprehensive plan, future land use designation of High Density Residential, has no upper limit, nor does the PR district, the density should be evaluated as a part of the rezoning request in consideration of the surrounding neighborhood. Occupancy would be either a family plus two unrelated individuals or one person per bedroom, which is consistent with other purpose-built student developments. The proposed seven-story building is a continuous, single form. While the applicant has included some articulation in materials and setbacks, the overall massing still reads as an unbroken structure, particularly along Webb Street. Staff is concerned about the visual, however, the applicant has provided additional renderings which can be seen on these slides. Open space is required as both a district standard in the PR district and as a use and design standard for multifamily. The plan includes 30% open space, which exceeds the 20% minimum. Amenities are distributed across the levels and include rooftop terraces, a pool, fitness center, and study areas. Staff has concerns about the scale and placement of proposed signage. Many signs are proposed well above the pedestrian level, and the size and number exceed what is typically allowed in the RM 48 zoning district. Staff recommends signage that better supports a more walkable pedestrian-focused environment. The slides illustrate several of the proposed signs and their dimensions. The applicant is proposing a reduction in parking from the required 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom for multifamily to 0.62 parking spaces per bedroom for a total of 448 spaces, all located in a structured parking deck below the residential units. The proposal exceeds the required 188 bicycle parking spaces and proposes 296 bicycle parking spaces. The applicant is proposing a 5% canopy coverage, which is less than the typically required amount for similar uses. Water and sewer infrastructure are reviewed by Town Engineering Staff, and the Town Engineering Department has reviewed the stormwater concept plan and has approved it. The proposal includes a centralized trash and recycling area with trash chutes on each floor. Collection will be handled privately. There is a proposed eight-foot sidewalk along Webb Street and a five-foot sidewalk along Orchard Street. The Corridor Committee provided several comments. They oppose the removal of the planting strip along Webb Street, or along Orchard Street, rather, Webb Street, I'm sorry, and sidewalk along the public alley. They also recommend the additional ways to improve access to the bike parking located within the garage. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 28th. Two community members attended and asked questions related to traffic, occupancy, and parking. The applicant is requesting two modifications regarding the building orientation and the elimination of the four-foot vegetative strip on Webb Street. The applicant has offered four proffers, which can be seen on this slide, and includes substantial conformance, occupancy limitations, energy efficiency, and green building standards, and a contribution to the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Other questions for staff?
So when you say that the town recommends a green building standard, that's something that we can adopt in our approval, that if they meet that? Or that's something that that goes back to them and then would come back to us?
They're proffering a particular green building standard for for their own building, and it's up to you all to determine whether or not it is sufficient to meet your kind of green building ideals.
Other questions for staff? Have a presentation?
Good evening. Steve Semotis of Ballser and Associates, 80 College Street in Christiansburg. Thank you for the time this evening. Want to go through our plans, and most of these, I think all except for one, you all have in your packet with part of the revised materials. What I'd like to do is just, I know Kenzie's touched on most of it, but just touch through the details again on the project itself. Some other things I want to add, and then spend some time talking about how we went back after our last work session meeting with our architecture team and touched through some of the concerns regarding pedestrian comfort along Webb Street and Orchard Street, articulation in the building, and some of the additional images. Just going to jump to our site plan here. Actually, I'll jump back one. So on the site right now, as you all know, there are four existing buildings on the bigger tech terrace property, there's a small, single-family rental home, and then a second or a separate apartment building, eight, one unit, a one-bedroom, eight units, one bed each, apartment building that came in after we submitted our initial applications. As you all are aware, we've been to you at work session twice. That's the upper right-hand corner there that came in after our initial submission. So right now, there's 203 bedrooms onsite today between all three of those. So what we're asking is a net increase. It is that 723, but it's a net increase of about 520 beds on the property itself. A mix of one, two, three, four, and five-unit apartments within this building. We're going to talk through the open space here in a few minutes. But again, Kenzie's touched on what we have included in the in the application as far as occupancy, meeting that occupancy standard, similar to what was approved with the 801 project back several months ago. Basically, you know, a family plus two and no more than one per bedroom if everybody's unrelated. We talked about building height, which I'll touch on in a second as well. Total parking provided, as mentioned, was 448 spaces, which is a 0.62 spaces per bed. As you all are aware, some of the more recently approved projects have those dropping down to about a 0.5. When we did the Edge back in 2013, 2012, whenever it was, we were at a one-space-per-bedroom ratio on that. And as you all drive by that, by there, you see that there are, there are excess spaces in that parking lot. As we talked to our client, we didn't want to drop down necessarily as low as half. So as we've reworked the project, dropped some dropped some units, dropped some beds from the initial submittal, and pulled, we pulled some parking off of Webb Street as part of the flood study, which I'll touch on as well, we're hitting that 0.62 spaces per bed. Obviously, with this location, it's very walkable, it's very bikeable. So as Kenzie mentioned, we've got a total of 302 bike parking spaces onsite. 296 of those are covered and secured within the two levels of the deck, Level 1 and Level 2. So we've got two levels of parking and five levels above. You would enter that through the through the main access, through the building, through the parking deck, and it's got secured access within their doors. Everything's lockable and key fobbed. So you can't, it's not just an open, open bike parking in the deck itself, it is secured within the deck. We've also got six standalone bike spaces outside, just in front of the leasing area adjacent to the corner there at Webb and Orchard. Talked about sidewalks a little bit. So Orchard Street initially, and we'll talk about this here in a minute with some of the visuals, initially, initially, we had proposed sidewalk along that section because of trying to discourage people from going north or going page north on that up to Price's Fork and wanting to encourage people to go out towards Tom's Creek and the end of Webb Street at the signalized intersection. As we talked with staff and talked with Corridor, we do have that. We have added back in the grass strip that we had originally proposed not to be there, and we've we've added some additional sidewalk, as we touched on in the last one, in order to access the the short edge of the building along Orchard Street that came into play when we picked up the fifth property up in that upper right-hand corner. The sidewalk along Webb Street, again, it's eight feet wide from face of curb back to the edge of the sidewalk, and you see a couple little bumpouts there. We've got power poles in that area, but it's also providing a little bit of a pedestrian refuge that that we've shared in the updated perspectives that we'll that we'll show here in a few minutes. You can obviously see the big, thick, blue line there at the at the page, bottom of the page there on the other side of Webb Street. So we were required to do a flood study with this, similar to what 801 did. We've submitted that a couple times to the town. We're still tweaking tweaking a few items on that. But what that would entail is basically widening that section of the creek there. We had done some improvements to the creek in the existing culvert on the right-hand side entrance as you go into the Edge as part of that property. What this will do, it will expand that that creek channel, and we'll be expanding it into Webb Street. So by doing that, there were parallel parking spaces along Webb Street. We're removing those and just keeping a two-way through lane there on Webb Street, but that will be increasing that to work towards our floodplain requirements. As Kenzie mentioned, water and sewer has been reviewed, our stormwater concept plan has been reviewed and approved. We did have a traffic report that was done. I think 12 intersections were studied by Grove Slade based on the information they had done also on 801. We used them to keep the consistency of the traffic analysis that was done there. No impacts were shown that would need to be, that were warranted and need to be taken care of with this project. So that's been done and submitted and approved by the town as well. All the maintenance will be done by an internal management company. We'll have leasing and management onsite. So all that will be maintained privately by the by the management company. Kenzie mentioned the trash corral, so we've got one trash location. Kenzie, could you point to that on the screen so that would be accessed privately right there? So again, trash chutes on every level of the building, so we wouldn't have any dumpsters or anything that are that are visible to the public right of way. So green space, we talked about green space a lot at our last last meeting, and as Kenzie mentioned also, we're at about 30% open space right now. So open space, as you all are aware, PRD allows us to count some of that open space as interior amenities, space, fitness areas, meeting rooms, things like that. So we have that. But we also have the four large areas that are the courtyards that exist on that, on the top of the second level of the deck. So they are open to the sky above. The three on the left-hand side of the page, you can see, well, the two in the middle, those would, those would basically be surrounded by buildings, but open to the sky. The one on the left opens up to the left-hand side of the building there. And the larger one where there's a pool on the second deck, and there's courtyard pool space up there, is the larger one on the right-hand side, which we'll see in the images here we show in just a few minutes. Sustainability, I believe Mr. Irman had brought that up. So one of, we're doing two things sustainability-wise. We are adding electric car charging stations on the second level of our deck. We don't have those on the first level because that is part of the floodplain. So we've got those on the second level, and we're also providing a similar sustainability proffer for the for the energy use intensity of less than 40 kbtUs per square foot that hits that sustainable mark that was that was established as part of the 801. So using a similar sustainability mark for that. As part of open space, one of the things Planning Commission had asked for is just in context of where the site is regarding other open spaces in town. So we wanted to provide this. Our site's right there in the red, the purplish color across the across Price's Fork is obviously all Virginia Tech property. You'll see Long Park on your right, you'll see the municipal park up in the upper right-hand corner. The green just to the 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock of our site is Gilbert Linkus. So again, there's a trail connection from our site over to that, you know, to the open space there at Gilbert Linkus. So there is open space that's in part form within walking distance to the property itself. So architecturally, so I want to touch on specifically from Todd Meckley, who's our architect on this with Visionary Consulting. We relayed the concerns that we heard from from Planning Commission at our last meeting. And first of all, to try to clarify some of the items that we had on there that maybe just weren't reading as well, and then some of the additions that we added. So from this vantage point, you're looking at the, basically from the right-hand entrance I was talking about earlier from the Edge, so looking back at the intersection of Webb and Orchard. So you'll see that break in between the the two legs of the building there where the open space is, the larger open space courtyard on that upper level. So that's that's open and out to Orchard Street there. So you just really have that two-story height right there. And then as you look down, you look down Webb Street, you'll see some of the cantilevered additions that were added, the building material, massing, and changes in the material itself. And I'll touch through on each of these. And I'm going to scroll through some of these. I'm going to read them and then kind of scroll through and show you as we go. So first, the Orchard Street entry revision. So the facade, right here in the middle of the page, where you see the kind of the canopy above where the open space is. So the facade at the leasing and fitness area facing Orchard Street was recessed another seven feet back into the building. So that cuts some square footage out of our fitness area, but what it did, it gave us more room in there for some pedestrian and outdoor space right outside of those. So you can see those in some of the perspectives that were included that we'll show here in a few minutes. So that created new landscape planner islands and building entrances at the public sidewalk, enhancing both that circulation and pedestrian separation from the street. Webb Street landscape enhancements and those bumpouts that we talked about, we've added more landscaping as well as some benching and site furniture in that to, again, give a little bit more pedestrian feel. I'm going to scroll, scroll a little bit. So you'll see these in a few minutes as well. Actually, I'm going to go back, sorry. The clubhouse elevation, there was a question as far as what the material was along the clubhouse itself, whether that was panel or it was glazing. So that is glass, so we went back and adjusted to renderings. So you'll see full glass along that corner entry along Webb Street and then further up Orchard. So that whole section of office and fitness area would be glazing storefront right there in that area. So you would be able to see in and out of the building, that area. The cantilevered adjustments, so those are the, Kenzie, could you point to a few of those across the front? Yep. So you'll see several of those as you go down and some of the different different elevations here. So those were added, again, to try to break the building up and to give a little bit more pedestrian scale at that pedestrian level, again, which shows better in some of the perspectives. We talked about the glazing and then the pedestrian scale perspectives. So I'm not going to go through all the elevations. This was an image that the architect wanted to provide to you all, because some of that discussion was, how much of those offsets do we have within the building itself? So I know I'm blinking here, I'll try to finish up quick, mound and chair. But so if you look through these elevations, if you look at the bottom one, which is the one along Webb Street, you'll see that light blue color. That's basically starting at a baseline of zero. And then it gives you each of those colors, how far off they sit from the from the surface of it, of the building itself. Similar up there at the top, that light blue is a baseline of zero, and then shows you each of those colors as you show some of the setbacks and stepbacks in the building. I think Mr. Colly had a question about some of that. So it's hard to see in those elevations at this scale, so we thought this might be a different way to maybe show where we have some of those, some of those steps. And then finally, I'll go to some of our perspectives. So Kenzie showed a couple of these. So this is one of the bumpout areas that you'll see on the sidewalks along Webb Street. So again, have some site furniture, you'll see. I thought this was a really good perspective because, again, with that cantilevered section out, sitting out a little bit farther, it really does create some shadow lines. It gives you something that your eyes drawn to at that second floor level versus a straight facade up all seven stories. So I thought this was really good from a pedestrian scale. You can see the screening behind, which would be the, which would be the parking deck behind those folks drinking coffee there on the bench. This would be up Orchard Street. So again, as we talked about, the elevations of the building and Orchard Street vary, so we had to have two separate sidewalks to make up some grade, so we have some space to make upgrades. And when we offset and inset that, the fitness and the leasing area in that additional seven feet, it allowed us to do some bumpouts for some outdoor seating. So it would be patio seating that we could have right there off of the off of the fitness and the leasing. and the leasing areas there. And then you'll see the sidewalk, the grass strips, so Orchard Street's just off of the left corner of the page there. So the grass strip, the sidewalk, and you'd have some sort of a wall section there between it and the landscape and the rest of the sidewalk there up against the building. So that's another image looking up Orchard versus looking down from where we were before. So again, we were really excited we were able to do that. It didn't take up, you know, it knocked out some of our square footage in the fitness area, but it was a big fitness area anyway. And hopefully, I believe maybe it was Mr. Irman that brought that up at our last meeting about what we could do to make this a little bit more inviting for pedestrians, you know, along that section. Again, these are just the floor plans of the first level. So you see the bike parking and the deck parking itself, fitness, fitness in the leasing area. So you can kind of see that bump out where we carved off that seven feet right along Orchard Street in that section right there. Thank you, Kenzie. And I'm not going to go through the rest of floor plates. You all see them, have seen them before. And again, the proffers that we have, that we've talked about, the substantial conformance, the occupancy restrictions, the sustainability and affordable housing. Finally, we did spend time, as we always do, looking through the comprehensive plan. As Kenzie mentioned, this is within one of those areas that with council, you know, council guidance, it is in one of those areas that's approvable or favorable towards high-density student housing if it's the right project. We feel like we've put together a good project on this. It's redevelopment of existing student housing. It's walkable, it's bikable. And from a compatibility use, that's one thing within that section of the comprehensive plan guidance that council did, is looking at areas where it's not impactful to adjacent neighborhoods. We've had two neighborhood meetings. We had, I believe, three people at the first one and two at the second one. One of the first ones was Mr. Frith, who's now, his property's now part of the project. And we had one gentleman that was at both. So we haven't had any public outcry. There may be some neighbors here tonight that we'll address if there are. But we haven't had any public outcry about the project. So we feel like we're meeting many of the ideals and the intent behind the comprehensive plan for redevelopment for our project in this area. We happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Would the, would the changes you described on Orchard Street's side with the reduced space in the fitness center and a little bit more outdoor space be part of the proffer?
It is. It's part of the, yeah, it's, as part of our revised drawings, they would be, they would have to be within substantial conformance of that. Yes, sir.
Steve, staff had pointed out maybe a concern about the entrance to the parking. Is that accurate?
No, I don't believe so.
No, was that from something else?
Good point.
To the bike parking?
Oh, right. Yes, to the bike parking.
What Corridor wanted to be sure of is if, however we have the garage secure for people coming in, you know, if you've got a gate, that you've got enough room that somebody on a bike would actually have to, you know, activate a gate with a fob to have the gate go up, to be sure we've got enough room to maneuver around the gate. As far as accessibility into the secure area itself, making sure we have doors that are either large enough or will facilitate, and I think we talked about this on another project, but facilitate people being able to get in and out of them without some, you know, you're trying to maneuver a door and roll your bike in with the other and you let go and the door slamming on the back of your leg or on the back of your bike. So just making sure we've got, you know, we've got a good door system in there if we're going to keep it secure, to be sure we've got something in there. We don't have that designed yet, but that was the, those were the concerns as far as getting into the deck and then getting into the bike storage.
I mean, is there any mechanism to kind of guarantee any of that detail?
I mean, we can...
It's some, I mean, it's something that we'll look at in the building permit process as they, as they submit that information. And we'll just make sure that it appears that you can maneuver in those ways.
Okay. But then the town sort of at that point has leverage to ask for some changes.
Yes.
Billis, my only other question was regarding the courtyards, if they will have planting.
There would be small plantings. We wouldn't be putting trees. We wouldn't be putting big, you know, tree islands up there on top of the roof deck. But there would be some outdoor, you know, plantings, whether in planter boxes or things like that, that we'd be able to tie into roof drains and get out.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, then we shall move on to public comment. Are there any folks here that would like to comment this evening on this matter? Please come forward. And state your name and address and then feel...
My name's Dan Promozano, 2100 Shadow Lake Road. With all the issues we've had of pedestrians, the students crossing Price Fork, I'm kind of opposed of the 25 mile an hour zone there. But now with even more students there, I'm sure there's been a plan or a talk about a bridge maybe going over. That's my only comment. I'd like to see maybe a bridge because now there's a lot of students from the edge and now we're going to add a ton more. And so I think crossing that street is going to be even a larger issue, so. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other folks who would like to offer a comment? Okay, seeing none, is there any applicant rebuttal? All right. Do we have a motion? Okay, I feel like we may have some discussion then.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's very dense, it's very big, it's massive, the setbacks are tiny, the canopy is small, but it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And for that area, I think the, if it's going to be somewhere, that's one of the places where it might be. And I think some of the adjustments have been improvements. I did, I forgot to ask, there was some discussion of whether there might be cooperation with Edge with respect to parking, in case there's some kind of a parking issue. I should have thought of that sooner, but I...
That's okay. That's Steve.
So while it's separate ownership, it is, it is part of the same, the same overall group. We did talk about adding the Edge in for overflow. The issue with that as part of this rezoning, the Edge had a proffered master plan as well that had that one space per bedroom, so...
How do we change, maybe there's another question for later.
We'd have to open up the Edge rezoning again in order to do that, which is why we pulled that out of our discussion to say we could share parking back and forth.
Take it out of our own way.
So we have had those, we have had those conversations, but we didn't want to, you know, muddy the water with two different ones on that. I mean, there could be a way to do that in the future. I'm not sure if there's anything beyond, I'd have to defer to Andrew on that if there's any other way from an agreement standpoint for that to happen in the future. But our understanding, if we were going through this process and we were going to proffer that as part of the, part of our parking requirements, that it would, it would have to go back through the Edge piece.
Thank you. Kenzie, do you have any comment on that?
It would, it would have to go back through the rezon since it was a part of a proffered plan.
Is there any mechanism after this matter is settled to, you know, I feel like sometimes we go back through rezonings to adjust things, but since they're small things, they are, you know, not very controversial. So, I mean, could they potentially do some kind of, I mean, request a modification to the PR on, and, yeah.
I would, I would think that that would be one of those things that they would want to kind of test the waters and figure out if their, if their existing parking ratio is working or the proposed parking ratio is going to work.
Yes.
And then, you know, if, if they're finding that they're having trouble, you know, for whatever business reason...
Yeah.
Then they could definitely open the door at the Edge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful. Thanks, Kenzie. Other discussion?
I would just say that I agree very much with the way that Brian just described, this sort of, it conforms, but I feel concerned and I wish still, I keep, first of all, I think the bridge is a really significant comment because I think we're, what, doubling, I guess, the pedestrian traffic. But I also wish, I guess, that the, I still keep thinking about the ratio now of high-density indoor population and the relationship of public space and pedestrian life to that. And I, I feel like there's progress certainly on some of these indentations, but my perception based on the presentation is that the additional kind of carve-out outdoor space is actually segmented from the public and is actually for the occupiers of the space so that the sense still of imagining downtown community life in relation to this is not resolved in my mind. And that is already sort of in the traditional spaces in downtown Blacksburg, already an issue just by virtue of, of the way, the original design, that, that sense of, you can't, it's very hard to find a way to expand outdoor public life in the downtown area. And meanwhile, we're adding a huge amount of density to that.
Yeah.
So I struggle with that. It looks prettier, it looks better, but then when I actually think of it functionally, I'm only seeing, I'm still seeing a narrow corridor for any kind of bypass traffic.
Yeah.
So I'm concerned about that.
Kenzie, can I ask you another question? How well does, do infill, the infill guidelines that we have address this scale of development?
They really don't. The infill guidelines were, were really looking at more of a lower-intensity residential scale. I mean, it did definitely envision some multifamily, but, but more, more kind of low-slung...
Yeah.
Not high-rise type development.
Additional comments?
I agree with Mr. Brett, you know, in terms of what council's put before us to be able to look at in terms of location for student housing, redevelopment of student housing, this certainly meets one of those areas. What I think though is that the town of Blacksburg is just not, in terms of infrastructure, not ready for this kind of project. You've talked about the number of pedestrians that need to cross over Price's Fork Road to get to the campus, that's certainly true, but there's also a need to accommodate stormwater from this one side of Price's Fork to the other, which could actually become a pedestrian corridor as well. So some green infrastructure, I think, would be much needed in this part of the town. Just because we color something to say that this is our future doesn't mean that we have the infrastructure there to do it. This was a real struggle for me because I know it kind of meets the intention in terms of what's there, but does, is it in the best interest of the surrounding area and does it serve the public good? I'm not so sure about that. So that's one I would like to think about a little bit more if I had the chance to do that.
Other comments?
I would just push back a little bit. The places in town that have the most healthy, vibrant urban tissue, the ones that have the most outdoor life, also have very narrow sidewalks and not a lot of parks and definitely not building setbacks with kind of lawns in front of them. And so there is a flavor of, of the public realm that is not about, that is, that is not about a setback, yes, to wide sidewalks, but it's not about a small front yard or a series of small front yards as a way that somehow it's going to be activated. In fact, all the, you know, all the Houston's and Orlando's and Jacksonville's have those and they don't have anyone on the sidewalk in those places. They don't have people outside. So I want to just push back on the idea that if we don't have small, now, if the space is designated as a place for food trucks or a place for pickleball or something like that, that's a different situation. But the idea of open spa, you know, if it's for shade for the parking lot, these are all uses, but the idea of kind of open spaces is kind of catch-all thing where if you provide an open space, people will play on it. I would love to have a work session where we all take photos of the open spaces that are around, that are around town that no one has ever occupied and nobody would and doesn't add, and that don't add to the quality of life in the town.
It's very connected to location, however. I mean, it, it, it is striking, the, I mean, as you say, people pack into some of the areas of downtown, but I would argue if we're going to try to expand the area that, that we consider downtown, how do we create conditions? I'm not talking about front yards, that, that would not make sense. I'm actually talking about the designed public space that is literally more square footage. I mean, it's that simple in terms of where there might be. So I love the idea of outdoor seating, but if there's a wall between me and that outdoor seating, that outdoor seating is not for me.
Part of the public realm, noted.
So if the occupant, the residents can go from the fitness center to that, that's great for the residents, but that's what I'm getting at is that, but I hear you, I hear you. It's, I feel torn like blank.
If one kind of pictures, if one kind of closes their eyes and pictures themselves in front of the New Indian Restaurant, you know, or, you know, and then walks south on Main Street, so walking up the hill with, with the, you go kind of up the hill, walking south, and all of the, all of the buildings are right up against the sidewalk. And as soon as you cross Roanoke Street, you get to National Bank of Blacksburg and that building is set back, not even that far, like that far. And it totally changes the, the nature of the relationship between the building and the street just by setting it back and putting plantings in between and not for the positive. It gets worse as it gets there and then, you know, and then you go farther up and you have a, in what was the tech bookstore, you have a, you have a bigger setback. And it's, it's parking in there, it's a parking lot. And so I just, I just want to push back on the idea that if we have green space between the sidewalk and the, and the building, that somehow that's, that's, that's going to be more conducive to a vibrant, a vibrant outdoor life downtown.
I, I think you're misunderstanding what my point is. I'm not talking about small yards in front of buildings, between sidewalks. I'm talking about a system, a park system that, that serves multiple purposes, that serves as corridors for, for bikes, serves for corridors for pedestrians walking, serves as corridors for stormwater and connectivity and safe crossing of roads. I'm not talking about strips of, whether it's National Bank of Blacksburg or whether it's a 10-foot strip or 20-foot strip. I'm talking about the areas of town that are redeveloping and what is the vision for how those things are connected and where do people go? And when they go outside those buildings, where do they go to find relief from the urban environment? You know, there's a long history of looking at these kinds of things and what's been done over the years. We're, we're not a city yet, but if we're going to be a city, what kind of city should we be? I don't think we'll ever be like a, like a, you know, a Houston or one of the examples you used. We're something in between. And my worry is we haven't defined what that is. And I'm not sure that we've put enough thought into what an area redevelopment plan should be. We're just looking at individual parcels, one by one by one by one, and I'm afraid 50 years from now, if we're all lucky enough to still be here, hopefully, we'll look back and wonder what, what was the plan for this? I know we talk about comprehensive plans every 20 years, but, you know, comprehensive plans, 20 years, things move so fast now. I'm thinking, what, what's it going to be in 50 or 75 years from now? Are we going to be looking back, you know, like go back 75 years and could they imagine what we would have, be like now? Or how would, how would we have envisioned that to become? So I guess I'm just have this heartburn that we're looking at these projects individually with, out of context of what, of how they fit in together. And, and we look at the townwide and open spaces, all on the other side of bypass, there's no infrastructure over there to support development over there. And then, so we put it all on this side and there's no open space, no green space.
Why doesn't campus count as open space?
I agree. Campus is open space. I do agree with that.
But it's losing...
But it's not, it's not real convenient to where we're housing people. Particularly when you come to, we're not, it's not diversified population in the housing either. It's all purpose-built housing for one... It's all purpose-built housing for one type of population, and it's assuming that everything that they do outside is going to be done on the campus, and I don't think that's true. So that, that's, and again, I, I understand the way, the way things are written right now, but I think it's very short-sighted that we're approving these really large projects without an idea of thinking about what they're going, how this is going to impact the town in the future, and I thought that's kind of what our job is to do.
And I don't think we can count on Virginia Tech open space. I mean, with the amount of building that's going on, certainly not in terms of our use of it.
My comments will be a little more straightforward. The, the location on the comprehensive plan is as big as asset, as far as I'm concerned. It, it is in the right spot. However, this is asking for the maximum and delivering somewhat the minimum, to me. It's the tallest request, it's the densest request, and the give-back to the town, and you know, we usually have this back and forth of, you're asking for this and giving back that. And I don't see the benefits to the town nearly as much as the benefits to the development. So I'm, I'm having trouble supporting this. The, I can appreciate the Orchard Street elevation got better. The Webb Street did not. It's still a two-foot-ball field-long elevation that still looks like a seven-story, almost hundred, 100-foot-tall building that is not that pedestrian-friendly. So I'm, I'm struggling with that, and I'm not going to be supporting that tonight.
Other comments?
Oh. No, I don't think that it's time.
I'd like to address Ms. Ryan Hart's question, if she, if she'd like me to, about the Orchard Street sidewalk. I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add, if, if, it means more to planning commission to have the public space on Orchard Street. If I, if I misunderstood that, we've got elevation change, we could, we could just as easily flip the, the bench sections, the pedestrian section, you know, over into the Orchard Street sidewalk versus the patio. It's just, it's just how we build our walls. So if that's something that's interested, you know, if, if that's something planning commission would prefer to see, that open space on the, on the public side versus the private side, I, I'll commit to you all, we can make that change before we get to council. That, that's, that's an easy enough change, if I, and I'm sorry if I misunderstood that from our last one, but that's, that's something we can certainly do that would maybe address your concerns, Ryan.
It, I mean, it helps. I think I, I don't know that I could. I think there, I'm not sure if it covers my concern on these other scores that have been mentioned by other commissioners. I, I appreciate what Tim just said in the sense of, I think it articulated something that I've been struggling with in terms of, yes, this does speak to the comprehensive plan, yes, this is the right place for this project, but it is, it is, as you say, sort of so maximalist. And my fear is, along with Blaine, do we, do we really have the infrastructure to approve such a maximalist kind of approach to the use of this spot?
Yes. I'm just. I, I want to offer just a tiny bit of, of guidance here that, you know, we have more than one element of this rezoning that we can use to make a decision. So the comprehensive plan, you know, has to be our guiding light, but we have the planned residential designation here also, which I think, you know, many of our comments on the development itself are in response to, you know, the creativity and the quality of the living space provided vis-à-vis the planned residential. So, you know, I, I just want planning commissioners to be aware that the comprehensive plan and the, the specificity of the planned residential are sort of where our decision-making happens. Much of the, the infrastructure requirements are somewhat codified, you know, we get these approvals, and we know that it meets those approvals, but, but the, the planned residential really does speak to the quality of life, which I think is certainly consideration. The other thing that I think this and, and some other, which I would like to very much separate from, you know, this discussion, is that our town is experiencing growing pains, and we have signaled that we would like to have redevelopment. And we need to also think very carefully about what we want to see with that redevelopment, especially since we don't have, you know, sort of redevelopment guidelines to follow. And we, something that is near and dear to my heart, we lack, you know, a, a formula for figuring out the impacts on affordable housing and how we would like affordable housing to be incorporated. We, we do benefit from more of a national standard of the green building, which has been, you know, a regular thing that we have asked for in PRDs, but now that we are beginning to include affordable housing and even in the redevelopment scenario, the stormwater and, and improvements around stormwater in the context of redevelopment, I think that we as a town have a lot to think about, you know, as, as we continue to grow and continue to invite more development. So, boy, oh, boy. Yeah. Okay, so we should move to a vote?
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Maybe for Kenzie, is that they propose to provide the trust fund funds over 10 years. Is that typical?
That's a great question, and I don't have a good answer for it.
Because I don't recall that with the previous project. Is that a lump sum, or was that going to be a 10-year distribution? I don't recall seeing that previously.
You'd be correct. LV proffer was worded that it was a lump sum that would be paid before they got their permits. So, at the end of site plan, construction doc review, they would pay that as part of kind of the permit issuance structure.
How does our localities do this? Is there a?
It varies widely, and we're, I mean, we can't require anything, that's why you kind of have the voluntary proffer route of just legislatively in Virginia, what the town of Blacksburg can require. So that's kind of why, there's no prescribed formula, so it's kind of clunky for staff. And I think the staff report kind of alluded to some of those challenges. It's just kind of where we're at in our reality with it, so there's really no prescribed method. It's kind of, you know, what the developer would like to propose, what works for them within their project, and kind of how they see it, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I was just wondering if there were trends that we were seeing around, around Kenya and different counties.
I mean, across the country, it's done all, all sorts of different ways and different requirements. There are payments over time, there are lump-sum payments, there's combinations thereof, there's units instead, like 702, you've started to see those conversations, so there's, it's a wide variety across the board. And I think the, the acting chair has some experience with that as well in her day job.
Yeah. Regarding the moment of payment, it can often affect the feasibility of offering any of that type of proffer, since the cash flow at the beginning of the project and the financing at the beginning of the project is some of the hardest to work. So very often, we see folks putting these types of payments at the end or even during the lease-up process in order to be able to leverage some of the certainty and revenue from the project and put it into the thing. So it, it, you know, a lot of times it's viewed, the later you can accept this without it being not enforceable, you know, that's the other problem, is like if we go past CO, then suddenly we're in a world of maybe it's not enforceable. So there's two ways to look at this, is, you know, doing it as late in the process as possible, so as not to impact financing, but before it becomes unenforceable.
Well, that is one of my thoughts, as well, is that you're nine years down the road, and.
Yeah. What's to get them to pay it?
Does a town send out a bill? Like, how does that work? Do they, does the town just kind of wait for it, wait for it to come in?
We would coordinate with the developer to kind of have a schedule. We would work that out, and most likely some type of memorandum of understanding. I'm not the town attorney, but we would work something out that would make logical sense for us and them to kind of memorialize a, a schedule. We do it with tax abatement on Fieldstone. It's an annual cycle that we do, that the taxes are rebated through the Economic Development Authority. So we have, we worked out a process with Fieldstone that's not actually in a proffer statement, kind of, just so it's a working understanding of how we all operate. So I would envision we would do something similar to that if this project were approved with that proffered condition.
It just struck me as odd in, at a very long duration.
Yeah, I wouldn't, it didn't strike me as odd. It, you know, like I said, it's, there's a wide variety of ways to do it, and I think, I think Mel just kind of articulated more, you know, eloquently the why it's done that way.
And, and I, you know, this is not something that, you know, I feel like, personally, I feel like it is our place to hold up the developer around, but these are all things that we need to start being ready for as a community, because, yeah, it's starting to feel like, getting a little precarious, if you will. Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt. Now we're ready for a vote, friends? Okay. All of those, and, and the motion is to approve? Accurate? Yeah. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we continue on. Oh, boy.
He opposed, just one more time, please. Okay. Excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry, I, one more, please, Blaine.
Post. Everybody? Okay. All right, here we go. Onto AFD 25-1, ordinance 2096, withdraw of approximately 4.62, or 4.672, oh, that's weird, acres of land from the Agricultural Forest District, but only part of it is in town.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, first we'll start with a staff presentation from Mr. Warren.
Thank you all. The property owners, James and Carol Berger. This is, the house is located at 701 Bishop Road, and it is, as you mentioned, 4.672 acres. Only 3.18 of those acres are in town, and the current zoning is rural residential one. The present use is that single-family house with, with farmland in forest, forest area around it, and then the proposed use is for, for single-family residential with, with the new parcels that are being proposed. So with Agricultural Forested District, we have many acres in town, mostly in our Toms Creek Basin, but some east of the bypass. This happens to be one of the areas east of the bypass. They're represented in green, as you see, and if you look towards the top of the screen, you see the lighter blue dotted area that, that shows the, the subject parcel. Zooming in, on the bottom is Bishop Road, to the top is Tree Top Ridge, and there's, the entire acreage for both parcels is, is over 43 acres. The area to the top, as mentioned, is that, that acreage, just over three acres. And then it does, where my cursor is, that it includes the area that is, that's within the county, but part of this property as well. So the applicant does intend to create three lots off of Tree Top Ridge Road. You know, if those are to be developed, then that area, that, that acreage does need to be withdrawn from the Agricultural Forested District in order not to, to trigger some tax implications potentially. This was the, the surveyed, the licensed surveyor, survey that was provided to us, excuse me, and which shows the acreage with Bishop Road to the bottom, and then the three proposed parcels to, to the, to the top, Plan, Plan North here. And then, so this is Montgomery County, Town of Blacksburg dotted line. This is zooming in a bit of the three proposed parcels to be created along Tree Top Ridge Road, which would be the acreage removed from the Agricultural Forested District. So when looking at Agricultural Forested District, as we talked about at the, at the, at the work session, if the, if a withdrawal is going to, is going to terminate the district in that, the integrity of it, that, that there's really not enough, that they're too far, the pieces are too far away from each other, or it, it takes the acreage down to the state minimum, then, then that is something that, that, as staff, we would point out, that is not the case here. The, the district would still be intact if this acreage were withdrawn. Also, the, it is up to any owner in the district to file a written request to withdraw all or part of his or her land from the district for good and reasonable cause. We had received that, that request for part of the acreage, and, and it would be deemed a, a good and reasonable cause for the subdivision of the property. As far as rollback taxes, that is something that is, is a consideration with withdrawing from the, from Agricultural Forested District, that, that it will need to be looked at. There may be some taxes that, that are, that have to be paid to the town that will be worked through with our finance department to calculate if this would apply to them for rollback taxes. And as was reported out at the, at the work session, the Agricultural Forested District Committee did meet on Tuesday, September 16th, right before your work session, and did accept the withdrawal by a vote of six to zero with two absent. And that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Warren? Is there an applicant presentation?
I don't believe the surveyor is here this, this evening, Mr. Gentry.
Is there any public comment on this? Okay, go ahead.
Anthony Dilbov, 1240 Tree Top Ridge Road. We live in the property right next to this proposed subdivision. I don't have a problem with the subdivision itself, but the plat is inaccurate. This proposal was submitted about a year ago, and then it was pulled back. The length of the parcels, the new parcel A, new parcel B, and new parcel C is the same as the length that it was last year, that also included a 40-foot strip of land. So the plat is incorrect.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Andrew, that raises a question. We can't actually consider any matter related to the subdivision. It's like the actual lines drawn as a part of this.
The, the proposed area shown on the, you know, that the surveyor provided, is that, is the point, 3.18 acres, you know, that would be withdrawn from the.
Right.
Forested District. I, I appreciate this point being brought to us, and it had been brought to staff before, and, and I will look into whether Mr. Gentry has had a chance to look into this issue and to ensure that, that, that is accurate, and that, and that the, if, if there is a, an issue with the, the plat, that that be corrected.
It's not a matter of the acreage. It's not a matter of the acreage that's being withdrawn. It's more, you know, what they will do in the future with the subdivision? I'm a little bit confused about which plat we're talking about.
Well, the area, I believe what he's referring to is property line.
Yeah, okay.
That would be.
I see.
The same as the area that is being withdrawn.
Now I understand. Thank you.
Is that, is the area being withdrawn specifically tied to the acreage? In other words, I think it's 3.2 acres, right? So, what is the acreage that's being requested to be withdrawn?
3.18 acres.
3.18. So if as a result of the survey, it comes out to be 3.3, by approving it, 3.18, is that a problem? Does the acreage need to be accurate? Or is it the intent of this generally area that's going to be subdivided?
Again, yeah, the, we would have to look into that a little bit further. You know, we do have a, you know, a licensed survey.
Okay.
Here at this point, I do think there is a question to be asked. Why the length of the bottom property line here is, was the same in the past two years? Although it does appear that new parcel A is an increased acreage from last time as well. So I think we just need to look into that further. So that, I mean, so that would be up to you all how you would want to proceed. But again, I don't have any, I cannot say definitively today, you know, that it's a different acreage than what has been submitted by the surveyor, 3.18 acres.
Andrew, if it were, if we were to approve it based on the staff's recommendations, which we are somewhat obligated to do, and the acreage changed and that were to change the two criteria for approving this, then it would come back to us?
Yes, I mean, we will, we will get this straightened out.
Okay.
If you were, if you opt to take action this evening, we will get this straightened out, you know, before council. And if it is a case that it's in error and it does need to come back, then we will bring it back to you.
Okay. All right, do we have any additional public comment? All right, do we have a motion?
Move that we approve and recommend AFD 25-1, this withdrawal request as described. Second.
Any discussion? No? Okay, we shall move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. Moving ahead. All right, we're on to zoning ordinance amendment number 60. An amendment to, an amendment to the text of the town's zoning ordinance to create a new downtown northwest zoning district for the area bounded by North Main Street, Turner Street, and Prices Fork. And we'll begin with a staff presentation again from Mr. Warren.
These first couple slides are, will really be, you know, some information that you've already heard before, but did want to go ahead and say it again. It's been a little while. You know, the downtown northwest district came out of the strategic plan for downtown Blacksburg that was prepared by Development Strategies back in 2019. It was one of six downtown districts. And it's the area that is bounded by North Main Street, Prices Fork Road, and Turner Street. The district really is intended to create an overlay within the downtown commercial zoning district. It would be optional. It's really incentive-based and would have to be rezoned. So it would not be a buy-right scenario that you could opt into this district. It would need to come back through a conditional rezoning process. It would incorporate more form-based codes, you know, regulating the bulk of buildings and transparency of the facade, more so than what we have in our code today. And there are a lot more detailed standards than what we see in other districts as well. Most recently, this was referred back to you all. In June, you met at your June work session discussing two items primarily. One was the overall height requirements as well as, as well as looking at some setback in height of parcels adjacent to St. Luke and Oddfellows Hall. Really, at that first meeting, it appeared to be consensus of the planning commission that you would like to consider recommending back to town council what you had recommended back in December of 2024, as your last recommendation, which was a maximum height of 120 feet for buildings, except for 60 feet within the first 50 linear feet from the back of curb along North Main Street, as well as a portion of Turner Street. And that portion would be 450 linear feet from the intersection of Turner Street Northwest and North Main Street. So you also discussed, you know, the St. Luke and Oddfellows Hall, mostly at your August meeting. And that's when we talked about that there really are already two proposed standards designed to lessen the impacts on the hall at this point. And that's one, the minimum setback of 30 feet on a budding property, as well as a maximum height of 35 feet within the first linear 50 feet on an abutting property. And those are in the draft today. You've talked more about, are there restrictions that should, you know, that should be, have greater setback or restriction on height be extended? You also looked at restrictions to be placed on properties across Gilbert Street to lessen the impact on Oddfellows Hall. To study this more in August, you reviewed different buffers at different, at different widths, 20, 30, 40, 50 feet, as well as looking at the distances from other existing buildings. Really, out of that conversation came a desire to look at protecting the view shed from Prices Fork Road more than really any other recommendation. And that was to, moreover, to protect the sightline of the Oddfellows Hall from the roundabout and then further up North Main, along the Main Street corridor. This is a graphic showing the two existing requirements for abutting properties, which is the 30-foot minimum setback for properties abutting Oddfellows Hall. And then, and then within this 50 feet, you have that restriction of a minimum, or maximum building height of 35 feet. And then what you all had discussed was potentially a new recommendation of a 30-foot buffer along Prices Fork Road. And that really concludes my remarks this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the district or about the proposed changes this evening.
Ms. First staff? Okay. We shall move to public comment.
Good evening. Good to see you, Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission and staff. I'm April DeMots. My address is 211 Craig Drive here in Blacksburg. First, I want to thank you for your considerable time spent discussing the downtown northwest zoning district. I'm a representative of 208, 204, and 112 Turner Street Northwest. As landowners in the district, we are very appreciative of your continued thoughtful and thorough analysis and recommendations to town council. This district is one of the few areas in our community that is appropriate for high-density student housing due to its location relative to the university, easily accessible transportation options, minimal conflicts with neighboring parcels, and nearby community amenities. We appreciate your continued support of 120-foot maximum height and hope you will vote tonight to reaffirm your December 2024 recommendation to town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMots. Further comments? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion approval, as we had outlined. And yeah, I motion to basically say again what we've said before.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Would that be just one clarification, with the additional 30-foot buffer along Prices Fork?
30, is it a buffer or a setback? Or is it one and the same?
I see it one and the same, yeah. I think it could be called a setback.
Do we have to say recommend approval? Or is it just approval? Okay. No, no, we have to recommend approval, yeah. Sorry, I got a little bit caught up in that question. Yeah. Recommend approval. Discussion, friends? Okay, we have had probably the maximum amount of discussion about this, but I think that the planning commission has been extremely thoughtful in what might be possible vis-à-vis Oddfellows Hall and also has, you know, not just said what it said before, but entirely reevaluated from square one this height situation. And I would like to emphasize to council that if we are going to create a form-based code, we need to give it as much breathing room as possible in order to realize what we have adopted from the Development Strategies suggestions that led us here and to really commit to our hope that this would be redeveloped in, you know, a thoughtful way that makes it a better space for the town. So we're serious, for lack of a better way of saying it. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? One. Yes, thank you. Okay. Our final item has been canceled and we shall see it next month. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes. And then we can go on to overall citizen comment. Any other citizen comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to unfinished business. The zoning ordinance review committee?
Has not met.
Okay, the historic or design review board?
Nothing to report.
Okay. The Montgomery County Planning Commission?
That was me also, nothing to report.
Okay. Any additional items from planning commissioners?
I have something, please.
Okay.
Wanted to bring to the chair's attention that we did not actually record a vote for the consent agenda earlier in our meeting.
Oh.
We did have motions, but we did not actually vote.
Oh, we didn't vote. I'm so sorry. Shall we return?
Yes, I think that part of you.
Okay, and the.
The motion on the floor was Colley and then Walker, first and second.
To approve the consent agenda. Can we have a vote? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Sorry, friends. Okay, and then new business, the chair's report. I have none. The planning director's report?
The one thing I have to report out is that as part of our zoning ordinance update at the next, the next work session that you'll have in October, our consultant will be there, Cameros, to have a stakeholder session with you all to start that conversation regarding, regarding the ordinance. And you know, they have some questions for you all to get some feedback and they're asking other stakeholders that we've identified. You all happen to be the first group that they're going to be talking to.
Are we?
But you won't be the last, and so there'll be a lot of feedback that they'll be gathering over the next few months.
Sounds great. Thank you. Our town council representative is absent tonight, so I feel it is time to adjourn.